Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, June 4th. It is now 6:10 PM. Town Council meeting in Town Council Chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Jay, will you lead us in prayer?
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick. Jay, who said the fuck did we do?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman Dennison?
Here.
Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
Quorum is declared. I believe that you have a person here on new business oh one if someone wanted to make a motion to move that up for immediate consideration. I meant to mention it to you guys. It's a bid award.
Brayton Street drainage.
I'll make a motion to add an agenda item to discuss.
No, no, move it forward.
Where is it?
B1. I mean J1.
J1, yes. Yes, please.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're on J1. I've just got to move it first, Elaine. Approval of bid award for Brayton Street drainage improvements?
Motion.
Moving second, Elaine.
I have Alicia Boydin here from Foster O'Neill. She's the project engineer. If you have any questions on the actual construction or as to why we bid it the way we did.
And you're comfortable, Elaine, with the process and how?
Yeah, Elaine's kept me abreast for the last five years on this. And again, unfortunately, I will announce we do have to reopen East Main, a little section of it. So from Patriot Oil across the way to the storage facility, so there will be a small.
We did request that it not be paved in the first place.
I did.
But that didn't.
And they moved forward with it, so. But it's not the whole road. It's going to be a little section straight across. So it shouldn't be too bad. The only concern that.
About sixty feet wide.
How many feet wide?
Sixty.
Sixty feet wide or long?
You know, wide, right?
It's only a six-foot pipe.
Yeah, it's a third, thirty feet, so they have some space to work.
So thirty feet curb to curb? Is that what we're talking about?
Thirty feet curb to curb and then a wide. I mean, they're going to, they're going to close down one lane and keep one lane of traffic and then work on the other side.
Right.
Any idea how long that'll take?
I'm not going to commit to anything. So we get the contract in hand, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes from previous meetings and approval of tax cancellations in the amount of $106.18 as requested by the tax assessor.
Move approval to consent agenda.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinances. First reading of ordinance 2024-5 repealing the existing zoning ordinance and adopting a revised zoning ordinance for the town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Moving second, Al.
You're not going to read that whole thing, right? All right, okay.
Oh, you just want to slide that mic over to you.
Marilyn and I have been through it quite thoroughly. We are completely satisfied with the mandatory parts of it. There are, in the subjective parts, things within the table of uses, for example, that we felt, let's get it in place. We had to move forward. That Marilyn and I want to take some time to review it line by line and make those subjective changes, some definitions we need. So I've started that. Marilyn's going to be starting it. The other factor is that the legislature is already in the process of telling us to do things that are going to change, have to, this is going to have to be changed for next year. But while we're very happy with the product, we, I'm asking that you pass it tonight. Let's get it in place and Marilyn and I will work together to make it what we want and in compliance with the state statute. The, both boards, I can say the planning board and the zoning board have been very cooperative in working with a lot of oral and intimate instructions to them by Marilyn and I. So we have been in compliance with state law. But I'd like to get this passed and I would hope you approve it.
And this will be a living document, as we've said. I mean, as soon as it gets passed, it'll be changed again.
They're working to change it up at the State House.
Yeah.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Jack?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that you've done, Al.
All the time coming.
Business licenses.
Accuse myself.
Move the business licenses.
A second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on the business licenses?
There's fifty-one of these. There's no issues from the clerk's office on any of them?
Is there any known distinction between thirty-four and fifty-one, which appear to be a duplicate? Or is that just a? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the business licenses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Just for the record, I'm not reading all of them. St. Anthony's Church, Phantom Fireworks, Ocean State, Oasis have all been approved. All Flea Market licenses have been approved. Sunday and Holiday Sales licenses have all been approved. And I think that's it. That's it. And for the record, Councilman Messier has accused himself.
Appointments and resignations. Request from William Malloy for appointment to the planning board as full member for term ending July 2027.
Move the appointment.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion?
To accuse myself of the voting of a planning board member.
Even a known?
What?
Even a known?
What it says, I have to recuse myself on any appointments or reappointments in planning or zoning. Given by the Ethics Commission. I disagree with the thought.
Any other comments? Mr. Malloy here tonight?
No, and he's moving from the alternate position to, to the board itself.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Request from Kylie Knott for appointment to the West Warwick 250th Commission.
Move the appointment.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? I think Kylie's here in the back tonight. Hi Kylie, how are you?
We're not going to make you make a speech, okay? That's a, anybody that knows Kylie knows she's a big history buff. So I actually encouraged her to apply. I think she will do a great job. And I actually nagged her. It wasn't encouraging, it was a nag. Yes.
She'll represent us very well.
Yes.
In professional manners. Good fit.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kylie.
Thank you for attending, too.
New business. Item oh one was already considered. New business oh two, certification of the town budget approved at the May 23rd, 2024, all-day referendum.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Approval of the fiscal year 2025 tax levy resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? I do want to just point out, our all-day referendum in our budget was attended by under 500 voters.
Two hundred and forty-one voted. And about twenty worth of meeting.
I think that's the lowest since I've been here.
Been the lowest.
Maybe, maybe ever, right? But definitely since I've been on.
Yeah.
You know, something we're probably going to look at in the future, but that's probably later on in this, in this discussion.
It is.
So. Any other comments? Not public. You can bring it up there in public session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution authorizing payment for the services of the police navigator from opioid settlement funds.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion?
We're just looking to continue to retain the services of the Providence Center and specifically the navigator that's been assigned to the police department, probably going on our fifth year now. And this is the second year that I've requested that we fund that position through the opioid settlement funds.
And that makes perfect sense. I mean.
And to be honest, today, ironically, I did receive a call from a constituent who happened to speak about two people. She spoke about this individual who came to her house with Officer Harry. That's how she put it. And she said how professional, courteous, and was able to work with her. And, you know, like I said, I've had interactions with these individuals also. And, you know, I gotta highly recommend having this service. It's definitely a good, good thing for the town.
No question.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion action. Kent County Water Authority project on Coeisa Avenue, additional hours of construction.
You got to move that.
Move the, move the discussion. Now we don't really need to, now we just talk.
Yeah.
Mark, I asked for this to be put on just, and I sent copies, everybody. The... Dave Simmons had sent a letter to RIDOT. And then RIDOT responded just yesterday. The substance of the letter essentially is, is that Kent County Water recognizes that there's been some issues. They've been working diligently on taking some corrective action. And one of those actions is requiring additional work after our normal construction hours. So initially, they wanted us to approve that. I didn't feel that I had the authority to approve work on a state road. So after going back and forth a little bit, a letter was submitted that we were aware of their need to do it. And obviously, we want to work together to make as, the job as safe and as efficient as possible, not only for the workers, but for the pedestrians and the motorists that need to travel that way. So the phase one that they're working in now, they've asked, they ask for permission or they're doing it, they're working, they can work up to 7:00 PM to get things done in a more timely manner. The letter that I shared earlier today or yesterday, I forget, was the response from RIDOT, looking and telling them essentially that during phase two, they accept in extremely rare circumstances, they don't want road closures. They want to do alternating traffic, which I believe the second phase, the way the lines are situated, that'll be much more possible than the way they are right now. So I just wanted to make the council aware of those changes. It might involve some night work at, at some point where it's appropriate to minimize the disruption to the business community and the motorists that are out there.
Actually, the letter that was sent today, that you sent out today, was quite definite in what, what's expected and what the state is expecting, so.
I spoke with Dave, I speak with Dave Simmons on at least once a week regarding the issue because the phone is ringing, the emails are coming, the texts are coming more frequently than, than ever, especially about this issue. So when I spoke with Dave yesterday, he, the state had given him permission for, to work at night. He would like to come up with a schedule to work at night. Basically, the area is going from the Coeisa Inn to Pep Boys. So we're not going to get there for, don't quote me on anything, please, but around a month or two, maybe a month and a half. He wants to line everything up now. He wants to make that decision along with the town to see what the hours would be. If there would be a, I'm just again throwing this out there, there could be a hybrid. Really, it's anything. You know, we have a blank slate. But to see what the less impact is going to be both on the, on the businesses and the residents, because there are houses over there on both sides. So, and then at night, at 2:00 AM, you know, one of my concerns too is, you know, everything's quiet, can't hear anything. When you start to hear the soars and the grinding and the beeping and everything, you know, and you don't have the air conditioners in, you're going to hear it like it's right outside your window. So that is a concern of mine. But, so anyway, he would like to, to get together and maybe that's, again, it doesn't matter if it's all of us or, you know, I've already had a meeting with them along with Mark because it affects, it's, it's affecting us right, right now. And maybe we can sit down and go with Kent County Water, more of a concrete timeline as to when this is going to happen. So, but, but it needs to happen. There's no question. And Kent County Water wants to be done. They can't wait to be done with the project.
Yeah, neither can we.
Well, I'm sure the businesses around that area also, you know, even, even today, it was closed from Coit up. So you couldn't, you know, there was anybody on that side who was having trouble. So people coming from that side of town. And then you also got 117 going on now in Warwick that's actually converging because now you're, you're coming off of Coeisa saying, all right, I'm going to avoid Coeisa, I'm going to go down 117. And you're hitting that mess over there. So it's, it's definitely getting congested on both sides of.
Or you try to avoid it and go down Green Bush and there's still a.
It hurts. And it hurts the businesses too. I mean, I, I get it.
No, it's still a small, I mean, what happens, I'm not, but it's still frustrating.
When you're in business and you're expecting customers and all of a sudden it's, you know, let's avoid the whole area, you know, you, you're just, you're just not getting the people in. And it's, and it's not right. The work has to get done. I think everybody is aware of that. But let's, let's try and speed up the process and do it the best way we can.
I also got to say, since the news article, they've done a very nice job with repaving Coeisa Ave where it's not driving, driving through all the humps and, you know, where they haven't dug, you can't, you can't blame them. You know, but where they have dug, they've relayed and they repaved, you know, so it's not as bad as it was.
And the schedule appears where they're going to go down the hill now towards Walgreens.
Yeah. I think that's where they're going now.
Right.
Yep.
And, you know, obviously, residents are a major concern, but we can't lose sight of the businesses who serve those residents. And it's not just about making sure that the businesses stay in business, but they're there for a reason. They serve our, our residents. So, you know, it's twofold, and there's going to be some pain, no matter what. And, and most likely for both sides, the residents and the businesses. But we need to do whatever we can to minimize that, make sure that, that these businesses stay in business and they're doing well and they're serving our residents. And also, we don't want these, these residents going to work the next day on a half hour sleep. So we've got to, we've got to come up with a, a good solution and, and work with, with Kent County Water and the DOT to do what's right.
And, and for the record, I just want to mention one thing. I hope people are watching that use these avenues. But for the people on Dawes, Lee, Narragansett, Tornetos, Carlson Circle, Boucher Street, I will be speaking with, with Chief Levine regarding the issues that everybody has been calling me about as far as just ignoring the traffic laws. I've, I've gotten hammered for the past week. And it's, and I don't blame them. I, I see it. I see it. It's just, it's completely awful. There's no regard at all. And, and we're going to, I'm going to try and do something about that. I just, we don't know what. It's, it's a tough issue. But so that's one of the reasons I was going to call you tomorrow, chief. So I have a list.
Any other comments on that? Thank you for the update.
Discussion action. Request for stop signs at the intersection of Quaker Drive and Shady Hill Drive.
So I put this on the agenda. Bear with me, please. I'm just, I'm working off a phone here because my laptop.
It, it doesn't open.
Doesn't open. It did earlier.
Yeah, mine won't open either.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review the document I put together for this agenda item. It was unfortunate because I spent some time on that.
No, no, it's, I have.
It's on the first one, but the second one is not there. But it's not on the, it doesn't attach to the agenda for some reason.
Odd enough.
Is that it? Yeah, that's it.
On yours, what you sent out. It's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's on the West Warwick, our I.O.G.
Perfect. All right, so after hearing from several residents in the area, I took an interest in this particular matter. And I went to Major Blaze regarding this. And to be quite honest, the Traffic Commission doesn't have a big appetite to put a stop sign at this location. I do have at least one resident here who would like to share her thoughts on this tonight. But I'll just start off by saying that, you know, I had been through this area several times. I, I don't get over there that often, even though it's close to where I live. I don't really have a purpose over there. But, you know, when you, when you drive on Quaker Drive and you get to the top of Quaker by Shady Hill, I was a little surprised to not see a stop sign there. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact, if you look at the pictures, the, the corners are very, very wide. So it's not a very distinct intersection, but it is that. It's an intersection. And the concern from the residents wasn't so much speeding because I explained the Traffic Commission's stance on stop signs not controlling speeders. It, it's more about the traffic flow. Most people don't see it as a necessary stop or even yield. And they're not yielding the right of way. And it's, it's definitely, it's definitely bringing up some, some traffic concerns where we're afraid there's going to be a time where somebody tries to avoid somebody and goes into somebody's yard or driveway to avoid them where there might be children playing. And that was, that was the major concern that was relayed to me. So what I'm asking for is to put some, some controls in place in terms of stop signs to control the traffic and make sure that people understand that a stop is required at this intersection.
So Marcus, I'm seeing the picture here in slide three or four.
Yep.
Shady Hill runs this way. The other street comes up. Quaker comes up. And without, if anybody went straight down Shady and somebody came across Quaker and just decided to go left or right, Shady doesn't have to stop it either, do they?
Correct.
I'm surprised there hasn't been more accidents there.
And if, Dave, if you look at the second picture, I don't know which one you're looking at, but if you look at the second one where there's a, a red circle and then a green square, on the left side of the, the red circle, you'll see how wide
Yeah, it is wide.
that corner is. And it, when you're actually traveling the road, it just doesn't appear like it's an intersection. It's a continuance of the road that you're on.
Yep.
So that's our request. That's what we're looking for.
Where does Shady, let me ask you this. Again, forgive me for my ignorance, but where does Shady Hill go?
Shady Hill comes back down.
It's not a double dead end, right?
No. If, if you're looking in, if you look at the very top photo,
Yep.
you see the red circle. Shady Hill comes all the way back down to Quaker once again, where there is three stop signs at that, that intersection, that very first intersection. So when you're going from Coeisa to Quaker.
It goes to Sycamore and back to She, okay.
Yeah, when you, when you go from Coeisa to Quaker, the first thing you'll come upon is an intersection that is Shady Hill on the left. And there's a three-way stop there. If you continue up Quaker to the very top where it meets Shady Hill again, there's nothing.
How about Sycamore? Is there any stop signs in Sycamore?
Where there's a green square, there is a stop sign where Shady Hill meets Sycamore.
Okay. And you're looking for a sign on Quaker?
I would like to see three. Because, again, you're looking at an overhead view, a ground level view. It really, the pictures don't do it justice. There is no, well, you, you actually see on the, the ground. Yeah, I did. It, it really, even those pictures don't do it justice. It, it really does not suit the eye in terms of a stop.
So you want it, you want here, here?
Yeah.
And, and you started the conversation by saying the Traffic Safety Committee did not have an appetite necessarily.
Right. Right.
And, I mean.
Again, I think they, they thought the original request was to slow traffic down. And it's really not about slowing traffic down at this point. It's more about a very confusing intersection for people.
That's why I was looking in, if, if we ended up, all right, three-way stop. Okay, that can be misconstrued as speed. But if you had one stop sign at Quaker, that would, can let Shady Hill continue their drive.
Correct.
And Quaker would have to stop to enter Shady Hill.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I know when we did, when I had my stop sign over on Roberts and they did, they didn't, weren't in favor of it, but I did, after we decided to go forward with it, I met up with Major Blaze to go, if we did want to put one, could you tell me where the, the safest place to be, you know, to put one? I don't know if you've had him come out there with you, but like, I mean, you do what you want to award, but that helped for me, for us to make sure we put him in a spot where at least it was going to be the, wasn't going to cause a bigger issue.
Well, I, I think Shady is a, is a long road, right? But again, you're entering Shady from Quaker. So anybody entering Quaker, coming up Quaker to Shady, they would have to stop. And that would, that would avoid any of, you know, the, the multiple track, you know.
It, it would certainly take care of at least half the issue. Again, you know, that, that corner concerns me. And now I'm looking at, I believe it's the third picture. It's the first ground level picture. That corner on the left in front of the parked car is so wide.
This is Quake. This is Shady.
Nobody is going to stop at that location unless there's, they're not going to handle it appropriately. Let's put it that way.
And could you, other than you don't use stop signs for speeding and, and we, through the years, we've sort of stuck to that? Any other reasons that they, that the Traffic Safety Review?
Well, if it's all right, I, I do have a resident here that would like to speak to it. You good with that, Mr. President?
Might put the chief on.
On this matter.
Put me on the spot.
Yeah, it's usually public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. I didn't let Mr. Oates speak when.
Right.
All right. So obviously, you can see that there's, there's a, a house right directly opposing Quaker.
Well, that's, and that's the other thing. I think that protects that house too. Not that the house has ever, I don't know if the house has ever been hit, but at least a stop sign on Quaker does eliminate half the problem of at least, I don't know, is it, is it well lit over there?
There's a light right there in there.
Oh, that's a light.
Yeah, there's a light.
There's a light right here, right near the house.
Oh, yeah, I see.
On the, the second, you can see on the second ground level view, there's a light right there.
Yeah, zoom in.
And again, that very last picture just shows Shady Hill where it meets Sycamore. Where there is a very similar situation.
And they have a stop.
And they have a stop sign.
Okay, but they have.
It is, well, that's Jeff.
But they only have one. So that would almost be like the Quaker.
Yep.
The, the recommendation or the thought that David had.
So what I would suggest at this point, Mark, is have, meet, get with Al, have an ordinance drawn up and put it on the agenda. So then when we put the ordinance forward, ordinance is always welcome to, residents can come up.
Okay.
And then put that ordinance together. And then we can discuss it then if we want to go one or three. It's up to, you know, we can go from there.
Okay.
I, I would recommend putting that ordinance, get with Al and put that ordinance together.
Will do. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion action. Request for no-through traffic ordinance for Campbell Street.
This is also something that I put up on the agenda. Since that time, I've had a couple of emails back and forth with Al. And I think it was more a situation in the wording, correct? You had some thoughts on this?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I sent today for your next meeting. A, I discussed it at length with Major Blaze. A no-through doesn't work. I mean, you can't tell. A no-through doesn't work, I mean, you can't tell people who live there, you can't go back and forth or people going in. However, we do have the no trucking.
Trucking, yeah. Right.
So I prepared the ordinance that's went out to the council today. And I asked Paula to put it on for the June fourteenth meeting. Uh, it's already in the process of no-through trucking.
Right, so originally there was just one sign at one end of Campbell and it was no-through traffic. And speaking with the chief, he just wanted to make sure that the signs matched, so I requested a second one. But come to find out, it's no-through trucking, not no-through traffic.
The other concern is the all-through traffic is how do you enforce it?
Right. And, and the, the major concern with the folks that live on Campbell, um, it is, it is the volume of traffic. That's not the major concern, but that's, that's understandable because that's gonna help people get around the Coesit issue right now. Um, but the other concern is the type of traffic. They're seeing a lot of heavy, heavy trucks going up and down that road. And I'm not gonna name the businesses that they named because I don't think that would be fair, but you know, there's some businesses from Coventry trying to get through West Warwick towards uh East Greenwich and Warwick, and then there's also some from West Warwick trying to get over to Coventry, so. You know, those are things that um hopefully will, will be alleviated a little bit when Coesit is done. But you know, there's, there's been some instances where there was some altercations between some of the residents and some of the um, the companies using that where residents felt a little threatened by, by some drivers that weren't so nice as they were trying to back into their driveway. So that was the um, the purpose of, of that agenda item.
Alright, you said that's work, you're working on that now? Yeah, I think you sent it out today.
Yep.
Thank you. Next item.
Discussion action, request for no camping on public property ordinance.
I put this on the agenda. Um, I did, I was asked to, there's been a lot of discussion about it. Um, I think it's, it's everywhere, everybody's aware of it in town. Um, I talked with Aldi Fiore. I didn't ask him to draw up any type of an ordinance. Um, I think this is a, it, it's an issue where it, it goes, it's everywhere. I'd like it to be a discussion amongst the council um before we attempt to even maybe draft, draft something up or not. Um, things can't keep going like they are. Um, and Jay, I mean, I'm gonna go back to you, you said a couple of meetings ago. I don't want this to turn into an hour, two-hour discussion and then we leave here and every, we have twenty balls in the air. We, we gotta make a stand to do something. So I've gone back and forth with this. You know, regarding the issues, you know, we all know it's a na- national issue, it's a state issue, it's all in every local city and town. Um, regarding homelessness, mental health awareness, mental health issues. You know, but I'm a West Warwick Town Councilman. I, I can't change what happens in Los Angeles or, or Philadelphia or Jamestown or North Kingstown. But I was elected in Ward Four by the residents of Ward Four in West Warwick, so that's where I'm focusing on. Um, so with that, uh, I do respect the advocates and their positions regarding this issue. Um, we may or may not agree, but I think that's okay because sometimes with disagreements, you know, and a lot of times you can actually get something good out of it. So, um, and I'm sure they're, they're doing what they can to aid in this matter. Well, the bottom line is, the calls we're getting, and I'm not gonna speak for everybody on the council, but the calls I'm getting, um, between the calls, the emails, the pictures, it's, it's not safe and I'm concerned with safety. Um, I'm sa- I'm concerned for the individual, concerned for the others that are in these locations, for the public who use, who are in walking distance of these places. Um, town workers who are involved, police, fire and D P W who are responding to unsafe situations. And these are not one-time unsafe situations. They're not isolated incident, incidents because they're continuing to happen all over the place. I personally feel that living in the woods is not, on public land is not working. I think we have a responsibility as a town council to, to make sure everybody is safe. People feel uneasy, these are the words that I'm getting from people, they feel uneasy. Um, they're living in, in trash. Um, and you're my town councilman. So basically I'm putting this on you, where do you stand? So I'm, I'm responding to that and that's my job. I'm not sure if we put an ordinance in place that we can say people can't reside. First of all, they're not camping, I, I don't consider, I think camping, you go out with, with a friend or a family and you're in a tent or a trailer or you're on some piece of property and you're looking to leave. This is more of a residency. And I don't feel that it's, it's not working. Um, I'm not quite sure where to go, I know these questions are gonna come up, where do they go? I don't know. I'm not gonna pretend to know, I'm not gonna tell them where to go. I am a town councilman in West Warwick and this is not working in the town that I live in. So I brought this up, this is my take on it. I'm bringing this up to the rest of the town council. This is our toughest part of our job. Fixing potholes are easy. This one isn't. It's an issue and I feel that we need to deal with this and it should be dealt with in some way tonight. I don't know how anybody else feels.
If you want me to speak.
If I may give it, just wanna clear the record is I received a call from Jay and I said to him, this is such a wide problem with so many different possibilities. I said I would appreciate not being told to draft any ordinances until the council was in a position to say to me, this is what we want your ordinance to do. And then I would probably kinda look at other ordinances though, but I do not want, I personally do not want to be put in a position to try and put an ordinance together as a suggestion to you. It's, this is not, that's not, that's above my pay grade, I.
Understand.
I want.
Well, I didn't ask you to do it.
So.
No, he didn't know, Jay did not.
I just wanted to let the council.
That's fair, absolutely.
So I'll speak on this and, you know, since our last meeting, you know, East Main Street has been the hot topic for me. And I probably three, four days a week, I receive text messages with pictures of trash. But also I've been told by our department heads, or at least one or two, that the area behind East Main is unbelievably deplorable. It's, it's probably not even safe for them to live there. The embankment is not even safe as the river has risen and has eroded a lot also. Now meanwhile, when I have residents calling me and saying, Dave, I live across the street and at three in the morning I can hear noises on the outside of my house and is either somebody taking my propane tank or plugging into my electrical outlet? Where people are now shutting off their electrical outlets outside their own house because they have to worry about somebody sleeping below their window for an hour or two. Um, also, um, young lady was sitting on her deck, sunbathing on her deck and rude comments coming over a fence where she can't even sit on her own deck in her backyard to a bike path that people usually just drive right by and don't bother anybody. But parents have to go out there and try to defend their young daughter. And it's going to get uglier and uglier as time goes on. It's, it's not fear to the residents who have been living there for twenty, thirty, forty, some of fifty years, can't even enjoy their backyard. It's, the amount of trash that is being produced back there is unbelievable. And yes, there are people who go back there and try to keep it clean or help them and do whatever, but as you said, camping. To me, camping is when you go to a campground, I could tell you now, if I'm throwing all my trash on the ground and leaving it for somebody else to pick up, that campground's probably not gonna allow me to come back in. Exactly, so it's just, it's not fear to the residents who live next to these encampments. And like I said, mine is multiplied, it was down to one at one point. And I was, I was asked nicely, can that one stay until they can do something? Well, unfortunately, other areas have been evicted or cleaned up or whatever it may be. And it's now multiplied back there because we're allowing it. And, you know, I've gone to the caboose, that's my adoptive spot. And I've been scared to daylights to walk up to find somebody under the caboose sleeping with a couple of nips and whatever else. You know, it's, had my extension cord stolen. You know, it's a, so what, it's an extension cord, that's fifty bucks out of my pocket that I put there, you know, it's, it's just crazy what goes on. You know, they've used that power to charge their phones. I haven't said much, I, it's the town's, it's still the town's property. I, I know Jeff has seen, I, I have found their, their battery in their phone and whatever and messaged Wendy and herself, said Wendy, do you know these individuals? They left their equipment behind. I don't, they're not disturbing the caboose as much, but when you're in somebody's property who's gated, it's a fence. You're going through their fence, climbing their fence or walking right through the front yard and plugging in their yard. That is not the way it needs to be in, on East Main Street. And, and unfortunately, I, I don't have a, if I had a solution, I think if anybody had a solution to this, we'd all be able to retire, right? It's, it's, it's crazy. But it's not fear to the residents, it's not fear to the business owners. You have a mill that's looking to spend a, a, almost a million dollars in renovations to look out the back window to have that. You have business owners who just opened their businesses there and they decided to build their business there. And they have to come in every day to see a pile of trash sitting on the end of their property. It's, it's just crazy and, and I wish we can figure out an area that won't affect people. I think I've given a few ideas over the past month, but I still say I have some decent ideas and I think we need to bring that forward. But these residential areas that are predominantly paying taxes, living there, renting, because some of them are, there're multiple, some, two families there, but most of the two families there are family, they're all the same family. It's, it's parents and daughter, you know, whatever, but it's just horrible that the people have to deal with that in their backyard.
Yeah, and it extends definitely to River Point, I know we haven't brought up River Point as much, but with the summer weather, I know my kid's down there almost every day. And one of his friends got his shoe stolen the other day because there's so many of the homeless that are over there and there, and I don't want to target, I, you know, everybody here knows I've been very advocate for the homeless, but there's something has to be done. And again, I said it last time, I feel like we're going in circles, but I think that's because there's not really one finite solution. It's not, wasn't an attack on you when I said that, but there's just not, there's not a specific answer to do it, like, what are we gonna do, right? What, we're gonna be, it's a lose-lose situation, whichever choice we take, right? I think for the police department, if we say, yeah, go down there and clean the whole, I'm, I'm not saying that's not what we have to do, but I think it's a lose-lose. We're gonna be the, you know, front story on Channel Twelve News for taking down a homeless encampment. But on the other hand, if something happens to somebody in that area, we're gonna be on the front page news that way too either. So I think we just need to try to make a decision of what's the right thing to do and not worry about that, I guess.
And Jay told me the story about the sneakers, you know, kids playing basketball and somebody takes the sneakers off the side. That kid confronted that individual or caught that individual stealing his sneakers. We could have an adult slapping a kid around, we don't know. Like, we don't know what could have happened. But if somebody's stealing your sneakers, these kids are paying a hundred sixty, a hundred, two hundred dollars for a pair of sneakers.
Sneakers are not cheap these days.
Yeah, and, and they're getting them stolen. I mean, it, it's just, it's not fair and it, the safety for a child down there. I know when I was thirteen, fourteen, somebody took something of mine, I'm going after them, whether it's a teenager or an adult.
I was gonna say, when you were thirteen or fourteen, last week you would have done, but that's a.
David has calmed down in the last several years.
Yeah.
David has calmed down.
But again.
Yes.
It's just, I understand, we, we gotta find a location or a place for these individuals. I know the state's working hard, I know everybody's trying to work hard.
It's June, it's not gonna get better, it's where the, the summer is just starting, it's, it's not gonna get better.
And, and as the weather, as, as people are leaving other facilities, they're coming this way and.
It's, it's a good thing because we have a lot, we do have a lot of resources here, which is a good thing. And I, I know that several times, I know, and Wendy, I know you've said this too, that most of the homeless that are here are from West Warwick. And I do believe that a lot of them are, but a lot of people that are transient are from West Warwick, when Socket, Pawtucket, they're kind of from a lot of different places. And I think it's a catch twenty-two, it is good that we have all these great services and great people in this community that do work, but I know that that does bring people here.
So I, I'll agree with the great services, but I'll tell you where I think in, take some blame. Think West Warwick screwed up. If you look at East Greenwich, you look at Warwick, they have those services on the outskirts, not in their main downtown. Like, East Greenwich, downtown East Greenwich, you don't have those services on, on, on the street. But if you go to South County Trail, those services are there, it's on the outskirts of their community. So, and we have it right here in Main Street.
They kind of just ended up where they ended up, right?
No, it, it is, it, but again, we ended up because.
Because they, I mean, they usually, um, and South County Trail also has a bus route too, right? It's, I don't know where we have an outskirts, I know because people always mention J P Murphy Highway as a spot, right?
Division Road.
Yeah, Division Road, yeah, there are spots, yeah. You're not wrong, you're not wrong.
I, I'm just, you know, it's, it's just frustrating because we're damned if we do, we damned if we don't, right? It's, if, if, if you just said it, if we don't do something and something bad happens, it's gonna be, well, the town didn't do anything.
Yeah.
And if we do something, the town did something, right? It's, it's, it's gonna be, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking for an inhumane way of eliminating this problem. I'm, I'm looking for a humane way to help the residents on East Main being able to enjoy their property. It's not even, it's not even not, it's not even the, when you're going down East Main here, it's not even the left side anymore. It's going to the right side and it's going further up the, the neighborhood.
It comes, I, I said this before, when the gazebo was an issue last year, it's about being a good neighbor, even if you're homeless. And I think that for some of the people that are out there right now, they're not being good neighbors. You know, they don't, some of the, and that, I'm, I'm not labeling every one of them, I'm sure there's some of them that are quiet, that are not causing an issue. I know when there was the gazebo, there was a lot of people that were, they were not causing an issue, but there were some that were and, and the messes I saw at last, after the last meeting, was it Flat Top? And I saw some of the pictures over there, which was, it was dis, it was, and you showed, I think you might have showed it to me, it was.
Yeah.
It was, was allegedly one person, it was disgusting.
And, and that's kind of where I come in, um, you know, to say be a good neighbor, I believe that as well. And that was anything but. I mean, we, we have, and it's not just trash, it's not just plastic bags and old shoes and whatnot, it's, it's needles. And we have a safety concern for our D P W folks to go in and clean that up. And not to mention the cost that's associated with that. And speaking with our director, you know, he ballparked at about five thousand dollars to clean up that one site. And let's remember, this is probably the smallest of the known sites. So you can multiply that by however many, five, ten, I don't know. But that's gonna, that's costing our taxpayers a lot of money. And it really speaks to the degradation of the quality of life in this town. These folks are paying a lot in taxes, we just asked them to pay one point nine nine percent more. And what are they getting for that? Except more of this. We need to take a stand. And I know nobody wants to be the first to say, this is what we're gonna do, but when it comes, i- if, if there's no solution that's gonna satisfy all, then I'm gonna say that we have to satisfy the taxpayers. It's what we are here for. We are working on their behalf. So that's the way I look at it. And the taxpayers don't want to pay for this problem. And right now we're asking them to pay for this problem.
Wait, I'm gonna explain, this is a Timmy question, maybe, let's say legally, I mean, wh- what, what can we, what can we do in this situation? I mean, in some, in different communities.
If you identify the location, if it's private property, you notify the private property owner that they're in violation of zoning, planning and building because their property is not zoned residential. If it's town property, you start off with civil trespass and then you have criminal trespass, which means the law as it is stated now has to be enforced. Um, if you treated it like an eviction process and you provided notice to all of the homeless and the only way you're gonna do that is by having law enforcement go and actually hand-deliver it to them, stating that you have X amount of days to remove yourself or you're gonna be removed. Is there gonna be publicity and pushback? Absolutely. But when people come in and say, I can't believe you're doing this, that's when the council would come forth and say, here are the list of complaints that we've had. Here's what's happening to taxpayers that uh happen to have these um encampments next to their homes. Here's what's happening to businesses. So I mean, you have just as much pushback on behalf of the taxpayer and property owner as advocates are gonna have for those in the encampments. Because again, it comes down to health, safety and welfare. So whatever they're doing at these encampments, when, when it relates to trash or anything else specifically with, you know, personal hygiene, stuff that's going into the river. I mean, it's gotta be contaminants. Um, normally when you have this type of trash, when the heat gets, summer comes, um, you're gonna be having a problem either with, you know, rats, rodents or things of that nature because that's where they're gonna flood to. So I mean, you do have ways to handle this, but you just have to have a united front and stop moving instead of.
Now, let's say you do that, right? Let's say we, we do everything you just said for the area behind East Main Street and River Point, like, what's to stop them again from going, or we're gonna go on the other side.
Nothing, nothing, nothing is gonna stop.
That's, that's the thing, you know.
Nothing is gonna stop until word is spread. Nothing is gonna stop until word is spread amongst those who are in these encampments that West Warwick is no longer a friendly zone. And that's that's the, and it's a, it's a, it's a harsh way to look at it.
When you brought that up at two meetings ago, when I made a a big deal about about Flat Top, and that was before we saw all that, that.
That picture came like two days later.
It's not even litter, it's not one person.
I honestly wish, I wish, I honestly wish we could add that to show some of the constituents what that looked like for that one person. It was disgusting, like for one person, this is.
There's no way that's one person.
Well, for what was allegedly one person.
But but what came out was, you were talking about East Main, I was focusing on on locations, the location of Flat Top, Plaski, because that's where where I am, that's my area. The goal isn't to to move them to, or say, you can't be here, where are they gonna go? All right, your problem, you know, that's not, that wasn't the goal at all, that wasn't what I meant, you know? But you're just saying, right, if they can't be on East Main, where can they go? All right.
Well, because that's what, and that's what they're gonna, and they're gonna go back, we're gonna.
But no, they're not, and that that's why, that's why I I think we need to, and that's why I brought it up to the council, for the council to make a decision. We just can't have it, it doesn't work.
We can control town property, we can't control private.
Private property, you would have to notify the private property owner, for example, off the bike path. Um when you guys first got onto the council, there was a huge encampment.
Behind the man, right?
Right, right near over near one of the mills, that's on private property. That private property owner has to be notified that he is in violation and it's up to him to remove those people from his property. And if he doesn't do that, then through the municipal courts system, he would be fined.
And I'm not advocating to, for the record, to pe- put people off of town public land to have them go on to private property at all.
No, you, first and foremost, whatever you think there are as far as a number of encampments, you have to add to that because it's probably more than what you think there are. As far as the number of homeless people right now, today, in the town of West Warwick, it can't be the numbers you think, it's it's gotta be larger than that. And like I said, you have to have a concerted effort as to how you're going to move them out. And again, where they go, they have to make that decision, but if West Warwick is now known as, again, not so friendly a place, they may not come back. But eventually, like everything else, they will come back if, you know, the uh if the show of force breaks down. And when I say force, I'm not talking obviously about, you know, anything physical, but if that breaks down, they'll come back, so.
Tim and or Al, has there been a decision in that Supreme Court case yet? That hasn't been handed down yet?
But again, there are, there are, I mean, if you argue that there are local ordinances and there are state laws as it relates to private property versus public property and what you can do on public property. No Supreme Court decision is really gonna be able to affect that, because how do you say, I am going to a playground and I'm gonna play basketball for two hours and I leave? Versus Mark says, I'm gonna go to the playground with my sleeping bag and I'm gonna stay there for three weeks. There's a huge distinction between what the use is supposed to be for legally and then what it's actually being used for. So I think we're on strong legal ground by basically saying, especially with, um excuse me, town property, there are certain things you can't do on town property, all right? Especially if it's there a school, I mean, we have an ordinance regarding smoking, don't we? Says you can't smoke within so many feet of a school, so if a playground is near a school or a flat top is near some, you know what I mean? So if you looked at it and just said, listen, there are things you are doing right now that are against the law, you can't do them, we're gonna have to stop you from doing them. But I'm gonna tell you, there's gonna be a huge amount of pressure on your manpower to get this done, because the police department, as it, as everyone knows, is down, you know, six or seven guys. And it's basically, it it's basically gonna, well, excuse me, but it's basically gonna fall on their shoulders. Because if you send the building official over there or anybody from DPW, it doesn't have the same type of effect that the police would have.
No, but if the no camping ordinance goes falling, at least we can work on the matter.
But a no camping ordinance, it it has to be enforced, and then you go, then you run into interpretation of what's camping. You guys might agree that camping is X, three other people may say, well, camping is X, Y and Z, all right? So a no camping ordinance is only as good as the enforcement behind it, which means you have to enforce it uniformly across the board. So you can't let somebody who's at, say, River Point on the ball field off when someone is, say, sleeping behind the high school on the on the practice field.
No, I mean, we're not, all right, no camping is is kind of what everybody's stated, this is what it should be, no camping, we don't even have to use the word camping.
No.
There should be no residing, no living, you know what I mean?
I was just gonna say to follow up where Tim's going, um especially with the new legislation of the specificity they're looking for everything. I personally would think that it ha- would have to be a very specific list. You cannot do this, you cannot do this, you cannot do this, you cannot do this on public property.
And and again, I I I had a situation last week where a resident called me on South Street. There's a resident over there allowing people to put a tent in their backyard and staying in their backyard. I told him, there's nothing I could do about that.
Well, there's, no, that's not true.
No, no, there's not, the the homeowner, like if I'm letting my kid sleep in the backyard in a tent.
That's different, that's your kid.
But again, if you're letting some, and again, it's private property, the town, and I, me personally, and the town cannot do anything about it. They have a tent in the backyard and they stay there.
I would dispute that because the back, the backyard, I mean, they're setting up a residence. Doesn't make a difference if it's in a tent or in something, they're setting up a residence, that property is not zoned, that'd be a two-family residence.
Oh, it's a two-family, they just added a couple more in back.
Where do we stand today with uh accessory dwelling units?
Well, I can't, what I'm trying to say is this, people are gonna try to skirt whatever law you pass. My s- my suggestion instead of camping would be you cannot set up a residence or a home on a temporary basis on these particular pieces of property. Then we would define it as best we could, so there's no way around it, you make it airtight as possible. Now, are people gonna say, oh, that's awful, I'm gonna let, you know, this tent, uh city grow in my own backyard? Well, then I think the town would have the ability to come in and say, you have a single-family residence, there are three families living here, using this as an address. Now you're in violation of building, planning and zoning, and let them chase us versus us chasing them. I mean, they're just ideas, I mean, and again, as the prior discussion, whatever the reasons are for homelessness, if you have a law, you have an ordinance, you have to enforce it. And that may take up a lot of man-hours in your police department.
It may, but it's unsafe right now and right now is is not working.
Well, based upon, I'm not, I'm not talking about the individuals, whether they're safe or not, I'm talking about fact right now of the trash issue and what that's going to bring. So the trash issue or the garbage or the rubbish, whatever you want to call it, that's not going anywhere on town property. And again, it's taking your DPW a lot of man-hours to pick that up when they would be better off working other places. So there's a huge cost, so I mean, circles right back to what Mark was saying as far as the taxpayers are concerned. Who are you gonna protect, the taxpayers or the homeless?
My starting point would be other ordinances to see what um what they're doing elsewhere. I mean, I think Providence has probably, from what I've read, taken the the strongest end of uh clearing people out. And I, you know, before I put anything down, I would wanna see what the other ordinances are, because this is a uh a major linguistic problem to have the language that that they're gonna be able to enforce is, as they said, you know, what's camping?
To add to the problem, I mean, there was discussion before about setting up a place on town property where people could actually stay. West Warwick's not big enough to do that, well, I mean, think of it, we're, three places in town that would have that type of square footage or acreage to address those situations. They're all gonna be in their schools, churches or, you know, downtown businesses, and it it won't work out. I was right, logistically, I mean, are you gonna take the civic center and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna bed people there for the entire summer? I mean, it's a great place, it's got a roof on it, it's warm, you know? So I mean, whatever you decide, it's gonna come down to enforcement. And again, once they get, word gets out amongst those that are unfortunate enough to be in this position, they may leave and they may never come back, they may go someplace else, but it's not gonna go away.
I'm for one with some sort of ordinance.
I think it's necessary, I think it's past due, and I think I've heard enough from my constituents that makes me comfortable that going down this direction is what they want.
May I suggest that I take a look at other ordinances, do do nothing but some research and then come back in two weeks and tell you what I found.
I think that's a good idea, but I I also think this is, we we have to have a two-pronged approach. I think we do have to provide someplace for West Warwick unhoused residents. I think we do have to find a solution, a brick and mortar solution, because it is not gonna go away, and that's not easy. Well, actually, we had the state in here, Secretary Pryor was in here uh last week, and at their cost, they have the funding, it would not cost us.
Not to go back to the project that got turned down, not by us, like, the good thing about that project was that it wasn't gonna cost the town, because it was the local nonprofit doing it.
They're gonna build someplace in this town?
If they, potentially.
What what other towns? What, what I got out of that meeting that went before the Arctic Redevelopment Commission was, we were going to be, this was going to be a pilot program. And we were gonna be basically the guinea pig for this.
You're talking about one eighty-three, Washington.
With the old Ocean State furniture.
Yeah, one eighty-three Washington, yeah.
So I'm not, and I, believe me, I've kicked this around in my head for for months and months. And we've had different conversations about where could this happen, what could we do, how do we do this? How do you want to do this in the best way for everybody? And I just finally, you know, somebody hit it, you're a West Warwick councilman, and that should be your concern. And 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 that's, and that's kind of why I'm channeling my, my facts where I am.
What Al said, if in a couple of weeks, council and department heads, especially police and DPW and fire, with recommendations as to how they see the problem, you know, how they would address it. How's it gonna um affect their manpower, that type of thing? Then you're gonna, you guys will have all that information at your fingertips and then you could decide exactly how you want to frame this. Because it's not gonna take two weeks after that to put it together. Once we have the information, take a look at what other, other cities and towns have done, or really find out right now, I mean, if if the West Warwick Police Department is spending X amount of uh time each day, week or month on this. Or what DPW is doing as far as cleanup, getting the logistics of where um, you know, centers of public activity are between schools, playgrounds, fields, that type of thing. And just say, listen, this is what you have, this is what you're gonna do, but the bottom line is, on private property that you have control over, this is no longer gonna be an accepted behavior. Now, if there's a place for them to go, great, but if that pilot program is being discussed as what may happen in the future, just think about what you're gonna do over the next thirty, sixty or ninety days. And that's what you're really trying to address, right?
And and I'm, and I'm gonna be honest with you, to everybody here, the residents that have reached out to me, I've been on this council for sixteen years, seventeen years now. Have never called me and complained about anything, except for maybe when East Main was getting dug up. But other than that, nobody has ever contacted me and discussed anything about anything going on in our neighborhood, except for the usual, you know, pothole, sidewalk, whatever. Never complaining about each other, never complaining about neighbors, never complaining about the bike path, nothing. This is the fir- and and people that don't even really know me, who just moved in the neighborhood, have reached out and said, hey, what's going on here? Like, they just bought the house, not even knowing what they bought. Well, I I I'd like to see something, Al, if you can work on something, I mean.
I'll, I'll, I'll just start.
What else is out there?
See what others are doing and uh, you know, not, not, not working on giving you a solution or ideas. Just all I'm gonna do is see what others are doing.
Terrific, it's a starting point, it's great.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Al. Save for public comment, Bert.
Nope, not yet.
No, not public comment yet, hold on, I told Bert to save it for public comment.
Almost there, we're getting there.
Approval of sale of surplus vehicles on gov deals.
Will be approval of sale.
Second.
One second, discussion, Mark?
Seek permission per our charter to put eight items on surplus sale on gov deals. Mostly DPW older vehicles and a couple other scrap pieces, and then probably in July, we'll provide an update on where we stand with that program as well.
So just from my own knowledge, do we have to do this every time we want to put something new up on gov deals?
Because we're looking to sell town properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, number six, the power to catalytic converters.
Not stolen.
I was gonna say, yeah.
No, but all, all, kidding aside, locally, obviously, people are stealing them here in in Rhode Island and bringing them somewhere. Can we do that and just bring them somewhere and have them?
Essentially, it's the same thing.
No, because now you're bidding, like, for instance, I could say, I'm gonna give you two thousand dollars, but I might have four thousand dollars in catalytic converters. I I'm just throwing that out there, like, is there something we can?
I'm I'm not. Tried to make it transparent by using gov deals, so there is a, a process, it's documented, who is, who's bidding, who's paying.
Yep, you're right.
Okay.
I'm moving approval.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, eyes have it.
School building committee update.
There's really no update.
No.
We're meeting tomorrow.
So just the Cliff Note version, it, most recently, the school committee and the town council approved um the school building committee's recommendation of Tekton as the architect. There are agent, more or less, is in negoti- in negotiations to determine the pricing for that. So we should have a a contract before us to consider soon. As you mentioned, the next school building committee meeting is tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock. We probably will have a brief presentation by Tekton, um and also um the starting of the development of a website to keep the updates and plans as they come up, um so it's readily accessible to the building committee and any members of the public that are interested in following along.
Any questions for Mark? Think you've had update, Mark?
Consideration of potential charter amendment.
So, I mean, I know we spoke a little earlier, but obviously November's coming quick. Is any charter changes or changes that the council seems fit? You know, one thing that I know we've been talking about is when two hundred and fifty people come out to vote for a hundred million dollar budget. And the amount of money we spend on a daily, on a, between the town financial meeting and the all-day referendum. And Sarah, you could probably break that down for us later on, but what that costs the town. I I I was a proponent of the all-day referendum for personal reasons that I witnessed up there when we did the vote at the town financial meeting. But, you know, in the in the very first year, we did it, we had twelve hundred, eleven hundred people get out and vote, which I still think was a bigger success than, you know, sixty, seventy people coming to an auditorium and raise their hand. So I thought it was doing great, um but over the years, I think it's on our fifth or sixth year now.
No, more than that.
Maybe a little longer.
Since I I've been on the council, it's been every year since I've been here, so it's been, I want to say at least ten, ten.
It's not gonna get old. It's been that long.
They blend, when you've been here a hundred years, they blend together.
They blend, yeah, so, but again, it it's totally fizzled out and we're, we're spending a lot of money on that. And we need to look at how we want to move forward. I I asked, just, I'm sorry, you know, even even the night of the vote, I was at a local establishment and asked individuals if they got out and voted. And I'm talking about town employees, residents that have been here many, many years, former employees who live here. And they said, you guys got it under control, we trust in you. You know, and I was like, well, that's not the attitude I want to hear, because I I'd like to see people out there voting yes or no. I I don't, whatever which way you vote is the way you vote, I just want, you know, I I was like, kind of like the deciding vote years ago on whether or not we went to an all-day referendum. And, you know, and I'll, I'll share my experience, there was an individual that voted no on a budget and got verbally berated after the meeting, where he cried walking out of that meeting. And at that point is when I supported the all-day referendum, because nobody should be able to cast their vote publicly and then get berated.
I still think that was archaic, that way it was also archaic to stand up with your hand and vote, I mean, or like even, you know.
So we need to look at a new process.
I agree, but you have to look at two, two hundred and fifty people did come out and vote who cared in part of the town. And is it fiscally responsible if we continue like this? No, but I'm also. But I'm also looking at, I don't want to take anybody's vote away from them, who, who want to do things the right way, who want to come out and express their opinion.
So we provide that opportunity in public hearings and we, and workshops. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time on those, and those aren't very well attended either. But I think it's become a more archaic, I think there was an article in the Journal just recently about the number of communities that actually process things the way we do.
I think we're one of seven, eight.
And, and many of them are very tiny, smaller.
Can we talk about this right now?
Coventry only, Coventry only recent.
Well, what I was going to suggest is that you're not really taking their vote away, because they're the ones that were going to have to vote to approve the change. So you're really not taking their vote away. So if you think about it, over the past twenty years, how the old archaic system has changed, and a lot of communities have now started to rethink. You guys get elected every four years, and you obviously got the difference of the three versus two. So the taxpayer or the citizen that's voting can vote you out if you don't do the right thing. This archaic way of doing it is just, you know, I think about it, the last five years, without getting into personalities, most of the people that come to the financial town meeting have some connection to the town. You don't have a lot of debate, you don't have a lot of questions, you don't have a lot of comments. And then this turnout this year was just, I mean, just, but they had, they do have, you, they have the right to say no to what you're proposing, so that's how they're going to exercise their vote.
We've even done more in the past few years to get the word out.
Would that be on a ballot in November?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, you'd have to do it that way.
It'll be one of the local questions at the November election.
Yeah, Coventry just did it in the 2022 election, and they just.
They went to a super majority of the council, is that right?
Got a copy of it to share with you guys. I think we have like a workshop or a future meeting agenda item about this. But they went to, the town manager proposes, they do the public hearings as required by law. Town manager proposes, and it has to be approved by super majority of the council. If four out of, in your case, four out of five did not approve, then the manager would have a second opportunity to come back with a new budget, which if that doesn't pass four out of five, then it goes to an all-day referendum, allowing voters to choose one of those two options.
And if you think about the biggest expense that you have out of budgets now, 120 million?
Just about.
Collective barg, collective bargaining, you guys decide that, the taxpayer doesn't. That's, that's a big, that's between salaries and benefits, that's the biggest part of your budget.
Mark, did you get a copy of the charter?
No.
Sorry.
It's on, yeah, I've seen it online, but I didn't get a physical copy.
Get a physical copy, like, I know, it's in the back, it's actually tucked in my backseat, I hate.
But again, my, my suggestion would be is have a, have a meeting specifically as it relates to what your ideas are, because I think in two more years, you have to appoint a charter review commission anyway, because it's going to be the, I think, the fortieth year since they passed it back in eighty-six.
I thought it was every ten years.
Right, every ten years, so since we.
Yes, we did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was eighty-six, we started ninety-six, oh six, sixteen.
And, and COVID messed it up a little bit too.
So anyway, there's going to be, there's going to be the opportunity for the council to appoint a charter review commission for that tenth anniversary. But right now, anything that you guys do, I mean, it's going to be transparent, out in public, and people have the right to come in and say, don't do it or do it.
It's going to be on the ballot.
August, August, yeah.
So realistically, we only have one meeting in July, but again, if we.
Yeah, we could always do.
We can always have a special meeting to have that.
You're probably better off doing it.
If Mark has it in hand, he can highlight, and, you know, we can all highlight and.
Suggest if you're going to do that, you open it up for suggestions on some other changes to the charter.
Absolutely.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yes.
The only other thing that I was cautioned, cautioned against when I asked about the potential of us having questions upstate was that they said that the ballot, the state's going to also have questions, and they don't want us to get into a situation where we end up with a two-page ballot because then there's issues. So I think that as a council, you guys might want to narrow down, maybe just a few questions.
Decide how many you want to change. Well, like I said, you, you got the next year, and you can still do it.
Might only see five years.
Right.
Not even.
You might see one to five, you know, you know.
So being the new guy here, just imagine my surprise when, the day after, I went onto some of the social media pages and read comments about how we snuck this budget by people. I was like, I just sat in meetings for a couple of months, and there was nothing snuck by anybody.
It, it happens every time, Mark.
And we're, we're way better with, I think we've gotten better with the signage out front now, and we do a robo-call, robo-text.
They wanted mailers.
Yeah.
At, at what cost, right?
That's right. It's expensive.
It was, it was a little frustrating to see those comments, because I think we worked pretty hard on that.
I really agree.
Happens every year. All right, so we'll take that in consideration for the July meeting, and we'll see what happens. Well, we've got another meeting in June too, but if we look at it and say, you know, you got a couple of weeks to look at it now, but if nobody has anything, or if somebody has something.
Some things to Sarah, maybe you could collect them, and then we can look at what, what ideas may have come through to your office. Thank you.
Same thing with department heads, and employee, everybody, and just send it over to us or send it over to Sarah, and then data email.
Do you want to put a deadline on when people should submit to me by?
I'd say before next meeting, so at least the eighteenth.
To have, to have the discussion for the July meeting, to have all, any of the charter recommendations.
And then we can move into July with the changes, put it on the agenda.
So then we, there, there should have it on the July agenda too. What's the process, I forget, because we've done a couple of them, would we have to have the discussion then, and then have a vote on them in August? Because it has to be done by August first, so we'd have to have the vote on that July, we'd have to have the vote on that July meeting.
And you need the wording at that point in time, so that's what you need to submit to the state, okay?
The wording for, to vote on, on the July meeting, so that they have it before we go to August.
Yep, and if we need to have another meeting, perhaps we can figure out, yeah.
Thank you.
Upcoming appointments.
Sewer use board review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer use board review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax assessment board review appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee, tree warden. Recreation committee, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. Planning board, that was filled this evening. Planning board appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a term ending July 2027. The Tuxit River Authority, appointment or reappointment for a three-year term. Planning board, appointment or reappointment for a five-year term. Zoning board, appointment or reappointment for a five-year term, and then the West Warwick 250th Commission.
Public comment? Bert, you can stay in your chair, you can yell from there, just speak loud.
Bert, my, I'm bothering him trying. I think the verb would be very good, no camping on public property, but I would add. No camping on public property defines the reading form. That's the origin that they have out in Oregon. And then let's be, let's be cautious, guys, whether they're campies or doing something else.
Thank you, Bert. You state your name and address for the record.
I'm Oat Six Colonial Way, too short, well, no, one short, one could be long. Sarah, how many registered voters, ballpark?
So we have just over 21,000 registered voters in West Warwick. Of the 21,000, 19,000 and change are active voters, about 2,000 are inactive voters.
I don't understand inactive voters.
Didn't vote.
That, still don't understand it, however, however. We had 240-ish, 241, I like round numbers, 240 of those 19,000 active voters voted. And Mark, social media, there had to be at least a thousand comments about you people selling the town down the river. Shame on all these people that don't go out and cast their vote. It's got nothing to do with you people, it's got to do with the voters, they make the choice. I had to work, I was tired, this, that, got more excuses than God has fills. Tim, think back in the early eighties. Joe Lieberman versus Eddie Munster in the state of Connecticut, Senate race, two votes called that election. Two votes, your vote counts, ladies and gentlemen.
Hope Eddie Munster won.
Pretty sure it was Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two votes, and they, that's a big state, Connecticut. I've got a history, retired now, of over forty years in the scouting program. We had rules. Carry it in, carry it out. Leave it better than you found it, always. We camped everywhere. And it might have just been gone for a fishing trip and, you know, bivouacking, and, you know, half a dozen kids. Leave it better than you found it. That was always the key. That's not what we have here. And I like, I think it was Tim that mentioned, you know, camping versus setting up a temporary residency, whichever way you look at it. This should not happen on public property unless it's a public event. You know, you're going to have the, the Cub Scouts set up a weenie roast or some such thing for a weekend. Understandable. Private property, there should be no setting up a temporary residency on any private property without expressed written consent of the property owner. The written consent would give you people a little foothold. The Howard complex, that was a place where you had, I guess you would call it the poorhouse. You had people that were challenged, that was a place. Now it's dilapidated buildings, ready to fall down. That should be the ideal place for the homeless people to have safe housing and lay it right on the steps of the State House. The State House should be responsible for putting that property back the way it once was or close to it. Those buildings are falling down. Get some federal funds, open these buildings up to give these people a roof over their head. Have this in West Warwick, go to Robert's Toy Store down here, and we put a homeless shelter, that, that's the furniture place. What's, thank you, I go, yeah, I don't know where, yeah, Robert's Toy Store is what it was.
Yeah, it was.
Yep, goes back a couple of more years than most of you. But we're going to open a ho, a homeless shelter there. There's another property off the tax rolls. We'll get nothing out of this. These people, I do, I've always done for the, been there for the people underprivileged, down and out. I've always done all I could do. But because they don't carry it in and carry it out and respect the property, it, it, it's just not able to happen in West Warwick. You go to Providence, I watched, I had a meeting with a client two weeks ago, and I watched the Providence DPW tearing down the homeless encampment at the corner of Huntington, right at the railroad tracks, Huntington and Cranston Street. And they had dump trucks, and they were pulling it out, heaving it up into the trucks, and they cleared it out. That, they're doing that all over Providence.
But Mayor Smiley did say they moved right down the road, and Sunday broadcast with Channel 10.
That I didn't, I didn't see, because I was only there for three hours.
And actually, the Secretary Pryor said the same thing, that they're finding that they just moved, so it's whack-a-mole kind of thing.
Yep, and, and until you have laws down ordinances like we just spoke about, I think we're good, we, it, it's a no-win situation. And the no-winners are the taxpayers and the residents and these folks that don't have a place. It, it's, it's, it's a tough, tough battle you have, but I think you're on the right road for trying to get it settled. Thank you.
Hello, yeah, excuse me.
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Amador, Eight Lechance Street, West Warwick. So this has been an ongoing problem on Lechance Street for over, I don't know, I'm going to guess twenty years. I've only been on that street for seven, and I've experienced several floods like that. I've seen neighbors lose three cars because of those floods. I have water that shoots through my foundation into my basement over the years of erosion from all this water. My driveway is falling apart because of all this water over the years. I, I understand it floods, heavy rains, too much water. But there's not enough drains. This, where I live on Lechance, water comes down Shippey Hill, down the water, and then runs into my area on Lechance. I have another area where the water runs to where my house is. That picture is taken from my front steps. Why isn't this fixed? I asked the neighbors who've been in the area longer than me, how long has this been happening? There's an old woman who's been living on Lechance for forty years. And she said, that's how long this has been happening. I heard this gentleman, not moments ago, talk about fairness to the town of people, the P, town of West Warwick, the people, with the homeless people, right? Let me ask you a question. Do you think that's fair to the people with the West Warwick? To have to pump their basements out every time it floods? Do you think it's fair to the people of West Warwick when they have to call their insurance companies to get another car? When it rains, when rains in the forecast, people hide their cars now. They shouldn't have to do that. This is on Lechance Street. I spoke to this gentleman this afternoon. I spoke to the gentleman in the back, and he's going to meet me at my house tomorrow morning. What I'm going to show him isn't going to get fixed overnight. I need, I need you people to help fix this problem. This is bad. On my phone, I have pictures of water two feet deep in my basement. It's terrible. Why is this happening? We go to bed, it ain't raining, we wake up and there's a flood. They didn't have time to move their cars. People shouldn't have to live in fear of rain because of drainage.
Sir, all due respect, I think we all, I mean, I know Jay's area, as his council, as your council person, I think Jeff, when he does meet with you, he can, you know, report to you and, you know, report to Jay and, and mark what's going on. We all have these areas in our wards. Unfortunately, I got Night Street that constantly gets it also. I have, I have, you know, I understand, we, problem is, it does take money, it takes a lot of money.
That's why I'm here.
I mean, we spent, we, we, we have spent millions and millions of dollars in drainage.
So they did new drains.
Well, yeah, in 2018, we did the, the Shippey, the Shippey have drainage project, yeah.
But then they stopped. Why didn't they go down Lechance?
They ran out of money.
Okay, so how do you get more?
We have to apply for CDBG money and whatever, just, just like you heard earlier tonight, that project that just came in was Brayton Street Project. That, that is called, that area over there is called the, my, my great uncle used to call it the toilet bowl of West Warwick, because Paris Ave, all of it comes down, and it sits in there and floods out the homes and the.
This should, this should be on your agenda, I mean, this is an issue.
This is the first time, this, I'm going to be honest with you, this is the first time I've heard of Lechance.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I believe you.
So now give us a chance.
I believe you.
And I appreciate you calling me today, we had a long discussion.
And I'm going to tell you why I believe you, because I've asked the people in the neighborhood, why don't you call the town hall, and their response, they don't care, they don't do nothing.
But not if you don't know about it.
And they get tired of going, that's what I was told, and that's why I'm here now.
Because I've been on the council eight, eight years with Jay, and I've never, I've never heard of, of this coming up in this area. But question for you.
Sure.
Do you get, I mean, this is, this is a lot of water.
A lot of water, all the time.
Do you get this in a, just a normal rainstorm?
No, not in a normal rainstorm.
Like.
Unfortunately, we haven't had normal rainstorms in the past six months. We just talked to Jeff, every rainstorm in the past six months has been crazy.
No. Torrential rain, heavy rain, rain for a day, yes. And people just don't know when to move their cars.
Right.
It's terrible. They live in fear of their car. And this has been going on for over forty years, according to this old lady across the street from me.
And that, that area is, I, I, when I first got on the council, I did the, I did the tour with Dave Lombardi.
She is old. She's very, Debbie.
Guys, guys.
Did the tour with Dave Lombardi, gave me the tour. And we went all the way, we went from Shippee Ave all the way down Han Street, down where you live.
Properties are getting ruined due to this water issue. So.
But we did, we did, we, uh, I did, I did connect with you. I spoke with Jeff and I know Jeff talked with you.
I understand. And I appreciate that. That's a start.
Well, let's get started and then hopefully.
Properties are getting ruined. That's not fair to the people of West Warwick. That's their properties.
But definitely.
Just like homeless, it ain't fair to the people when homeless people are on their property, right?
I would suggest following back with me tomorrow after you speak with Jeff and I'm sure Jeff will reach back out to me.
And, and my anger's not at you people.
I understand.
Because it's just, I need to.
Frustrating. It's frustrating.
Need to voice it. I understand. And it's, and, and I hope something comes of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, is this your road too? Is this your road?
No.
It's not yours.
I have another water issue. David LaGol, 132 Patoxa Terrace. Our issue probably has been going on since nineteen eighty-four. Actually, I've been there since twenty sixteen. Uh, we have a double drain. We have the lowest property on that road. We have three roads in the two ends of Patoxa Terrace coming down. Every heavy rain, actually any rain that's one inch or more. I must have a thousand gallons on my property. Which I don't, I don't know, is there a town ordinance for a water runoff?
But what's that water coming, yeah, there is an ordinance.
Because it, volume, there's too much volume on that road. I met with Jeff last year.
Coming off the wall?
That's, that's the water that's coming off my, my front yard. That's the rain.
Where's it originate though, Dave?
From, cause I have a double drain in front of my house.
No, no, the wall's four feet high, four or five, it looks like four feet high from the picture. That's, the water's coming over the side. Where is that water coming from?
The road.
The water's going on the, is there?
The wall, yes, that's the.
It's coming down the street onto your front yard?
Yes.
And then over the wall?
It goes down, yeah, the way it goes down.
And I also, it backs up so much between the houses. I'm losing another wall. There's a big hole. The water backs up that much. I have sand on my patio, which is way in the backyard, which, that shouldn't happen. I'm sorry. I mean, I think this should be addressed. And that last rainstorm, I was like, this much of my electrical wire in my house. I think that would have been a large, I, I don't know what would have happened. Well, I mean, every storm, we, we, I have to put a board in front of my wall.
Has Jeff or anybody?
I met with Jeff last year and we, he's looking for money to try and put in it, Jeff.
Unfortunately, there are a number of areas throughout the town and as the town has built up, some of these older properties.
But my wife's been here since nineteen eighty-four. It's been, it's been going on, I mean, a taxpayer put up with that for decades? I mean, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, I met with them last year, Glenn and I did. And we wrestled around some ideas. Um, it's a fairly big project. The pipe of size would have to be increased. There had to be two more drains put in. Um, like I said, it's a fairly big project, so it would take a little while and some funding to do. It's over two hundred, about two hundred and forty feet of pipe. That would have to be run. Right now, I believe it's eighteen inch. We'd have to increase it to twenty-four inch. And I can't, I can't get, well, divert it, there's no place to divert it. There's really no place to, we can't divert it to the other side of the street.
You're just diverting it to another residence that.
The, the, the biggest problem is, is, um, you know, is, is the price of everything has gone through the roof. It's, it's, it's something that has to be fixed, yes. It's something that we need to address, but obviously, what we've talked about tonight, we have these issues everywhere in town and we're trying to fix them a little at a time, as fast as we can. Sometimes it's not fast enough, but we're doing the best we can. But it is, I've seen it. I've seen the problem. You know, a lot of people talking about that rain we had the other day, last week, Tuisio. I've seen spots in this town that have never flooded before in front of, uh, the collision, reliable collision. And I was walking in that water and it was up to my waist. It's never flooded before. But there was water everywhere. We haven't had a normal rainstorm in over a year. It's, it's unfortunate. Storm drains, can't take it. It's, it's a problem, but it's a long, it's a long-term fix. It's not a quick fix, any of it.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good evening.
I'm just here to address probably one line item.
State your name and address.
Uh, Christopher Seo, we're owner of Coisa Pizza, 306 Coisa Avenue. Here, obviously, for line item five about Coisa Avenue construction. I know I've addressed all of you. Jason and, uh, Mark and I have all sat down with Kent County Water Authority. I'm not gonna talk about spilled milk. We had fourteen months of just aberration. It was just terrible, right? But we talk about sharing pain here and between residents and businesses. There's plenty of pain already felt by the businesses, right? The quantifiable loss by us, probably the least amount right now. When you talk about going up the hill, it's pretty dramatic, right? So, uh, as you know, recently, about two weeks ago, I sort of hit my breaking point, right? I have a very limited power reserve right now. And we talked to some people in the business community and we said, it has to stop. It's too much. The road conditions, the fact that, and we parts word to Mr. Simmons about what's a road closure, what's not. When you close one lane from Coit to Pet Boys, you were closing the road effectively. You can call it a one-lane closure. But if you try to get out of our parking lot, out of Eric Apollonia's parking lot, out of Coisa Plaza, I think, out of Dunkin' Donuts, forget about it. We know what happens there, right? Now, when you have one lane closed for a specific period of time and you also have machinery that has to turn around, you have dump trucks that have to hit a certain radius, that traffic is gonna be closed off for a dramatic period of time, right? It's, it's gonna be an effective road closure. So while we talked about that, we talked about doing night work and I think that's on the docket and I think we all agree that's probably the most efficient way. What I wanna hear from the town, and when I'm here, I'm also talking about a group of businesses from pretty much Coit all the way to Pet Boys. We've all talked. We want, and we heard some great things tonight, but I want something in writing posted to the town saying what exactly is gonna happen. Cause I heard maybe a hybrid, maybe this, maybe that. A road closure, partial flow, whatever you wanna call it, on peak business hours will decimate businesses from Coit to Pet Boys. There's no if, ands, and buts about it. It, that's what will happen. That cannot happen. I've talked to people on the board. I've reached out to my contacts to sort of move this along. I think we've done more in two weeks than we have in fourteen months and that's, that's fantastic. But what I need to know is when are we gonna have a definitive plan? What are the contingencies? And how are we gonna communicate that to the people I'm talking for right now, myself and the residents? I understand there's some burden they're gonna run too. I think when you get past Coit, you have a less residential area until you get to the apartments. So I think that's pretty easy to juggle. And I think to add to that, I don't want to take too much of your time. It went a long time before it was fixed, right? And I have no problem stepping in and doing what we did. Frankly, I'm a little ashamed I didn't do that earlier for my peers who were suffering more than we are. Um, and I'll take some of the responsibility. I could have stepped up fourteen months ago as well. But how do we stop this from happening again? And I think that needs to be discussion for this council, whether it's an ordinance, whether it's a liaison position, whatever it may be. We weren't taken into consideration, okay? I think there were between detours that were dangerous during school hours. You have two pickups and two drop-offs for school buses during the hours of that peak time. You have residential neighborhoods just getting decimated by traffic. You have businesses getting hurt by, everyone in this, on this council has already mentioned how they're avoiding Coisa Ave. Well, you're avoiding commerce, right? We're QSR, we're quick retail, we're impulse buys, we're gas stations, we're food services. That's in and out. If you need, if you have thirty minutes for lunch and it takes you twenty to get out of the parking lot, you've effectively lost that business, right? So I, I think we need a mechanism in place in this town to make sure this doesn't happen again. People knew about it. It didn't happen. And I'm not putting blame on you. This is right, the contractor, I think we all know what's happening. But that's what I wanna say. I, I would like to address that, make sure it doesn't happen again. And I also do want, um, and I know Jay and Mark are working extremely diligently on this, and I think this is a success story, by the way, for the town. We were able to do a lot very quickly and I think, uh, Peter Alviti putting KWC A on the cross and help was very helpful. But how do we stop this from happening? And how do we make sure what they say they're gonna do, they do? If they don't say it's an emergency and going back and forth and also closing business hours.
One thing I will say, and a lot of people don't realize this, we do have two people from West Warwick who are appointed to the Kent County Water Board. And that's Bob Boyer and Jeff Lucel. And they're very well aware now how we have dealt with this. And, you know, we've kind of opened that communication back up. And I know Jeff had reached out to us personally and, and, you know, he understood our displeasure. Not only was, he's a former council person, so he understands, right? Going forward, I mean, he, they usually let us know what projects are coming. They usually send us an email, a message. Mark usually gets them also. And we probably have to do a much better job at when we can do these projects, you know? I, I heard from some of the business owners too, that, you know, if it was third shift, it wouldn't really be affecting them as much. Or if it was nine PM to five AM, you know, which is kinda like a third shift. But, you know, it doesn't have to be eleven or seven, but as long as you can still get your business in through the majority of the day, through dinnertime and whatever. They said they, you know, there's some businesses there that are only open during the day and if that road is closed, you know, that's it. You know, like West Valley Soup and Sauce, you know, talking to him, Jeff, you know, he opens up at three o'clock to, you know, seven o'clock or whatever it is. So, you know, hopefully, usually the construction was done by then. But the deplorable road is what keeps people off that road because they were damaging their cars, their tires, whatever. And, and that's when, when the, the press release came out on Channel 10 or whatever it was with Alviti, when, like I said, I think they're doing a much better job with repaving the road.
Sure.
And, you know, like you said, I think they got a lot done over the last two weeks since that last press conference. And unfortunately, you know, I think the state needs to do a better job when these projects come forward on a state road. We have more authority on a town road because we could sit there and say, enough is enough. It's a town road, right? We reached out to the state numerous times on this. It took the business owners of West Warwick to actually have the state come in and have that bad press on Channel 10, Channel 10 or 12, whatever it was, that it got resolved.
Sure.
So I'll give you kudos for that. Thank you.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, I don't want, I didn't want kudo. You guys have a much harder job than I did. I called five friends and made things happen. What I'd like to make sure is, and a mayor for a suggestion is, cause I, I know Jay and Mark and I talked about this, is, and I don't know if it's an ordinance, I don't know the mechanism, what it is, but I think you have more power, even in a state road, and I, I wanted to coordinate Mr. Nart about this too, is you do have ultimate say on, it's a state road coming through your town. You have more power than you think. You know, and I think the question was raised whether or not, and I don't think Mark knew, and, and it's a valid point to talk about, do you have unilateral power to say, I wanna change the permit? I, that's, I believe you do, but I'm also someone who just kinda does things, so. You know, I, I, I get it, right? I ask for, you know, forgiveness to the permission. But, um, I, I think you have more power. I think there are legislative options you can do to say, you know what? If you're gonna come into our area and disrupt our roads and destroy our roads and our businesses and our residents and, and everyone dealing with this detour, where there are a lot of residents that are just feeling a lot of pain, a lot of dangers there too. You have to adhere to these standards, whatever they may be, X, Y, and Z that the town puts forth. And I think that is possible. And I think that creates a way for you to communicate to the businesses, stop by, say, hey, listen, this is what's happening. We wanna address your concerns because, I mean, Boilin Fogarty just did whatever they could to save money. KWC A, yeah, they had complaints, this and that. Until Peter Alviti crucified them, nothing happened, right? And nothing was gonna happen. They could just talk about it. But until they were put in public scrutiny, nothing happened. I think we need a mechanism to make that happen quicker than, than it happened. And, and again, I think that is a public-private working relationship. I, I think that, that has to happen. I think people need more engagement. We all need to be here more often. My first town meeting, I, I have to take some of the blame. But that's what I ask you. We create some way to protect the businesses and the residents from people doing outside work, coming into our area, our homes and destroying our roads and our businesses.
We've had a few different conversations, you know, and I've been thinking a lot about this. Water company's doing a project to hire Boilin Fogarty. It's gonna take place this time to this time to this place. They let us know, um, Jeff and Bob will let us know, you're gonna get better water in the area. It's gonna be a great fix. It's gonna take a little bit of time. The police are on details for it. They're worried about the details. So everybody is, is, has their own piece to worry about.
True.
And I really think this whole thing was the effect it would have on not just your businesses, but the residents as well. Because, I mean, I know, living in the area, my first thing, we had a big meeting. And the biggest thing is what, what I was being bombarded with was phone calls about the details going here and why they're going here, the speed and, and all that. I don't blame the police department. I don't blame Boilin Fogarty. It was just a piece that was missing. And that's what I was concerned of at the meeting. We, we were told, you know, it's the business, nobody knows the effect on the business except the business. I don't think there's, there was any ill intent on anyone. Everybody just looking at their own piece of the pie to get it done. And, and you guys were left out of that piece.
Right.
And it's the same thing as, as developers coming in. The same thing. They come in, they go for the planning board, zoning board, and they wanna do ABC to F. Sorry, ABC to Z. Um, they get all the check marks. But wait a minute, this is gonna be a big effect on this. Nobody thought about it. And I don't think that's right either.
Sure. But I agree. I just think that left to their own device, no contractor, especially the one we're dealing with now, is gonna spend more money unless they're, unless they're held accountable. And I think that's what we have to look at, um, is accountability to that. Cause I agree that everyone's sharing the burden, except really the people doing the work. Cause Kent County has to spend a few more bucks. Who pays for that? We do. I, I mean, they don't, right? So they do, but they pass it on to us. So I think that, that needs to be addressed. But I also wanna say thank you. We, we've gotten a lot done really quickly. I talked to pretty much everyone here and, uh, obviously my two councilmen or, well, to kinda split that road, right, Jade?
Yeah.
You know, we, we had a great conversation and we moved quickly and I appreciate that. And I hope we can do more of that to effectuate change on things, cause it's gonna keep coming. And I hope, and also we can keep up this momentum. You know, we kinda have them against the ropes. First time, you know, David and Goliath situation, we need to keep them there because, uh, right now that road's starting to look pretty good and it needs to stay that way. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Just state your name and address for the record.
I might not be tall enough for this. Hi, I'm Kim, Kimberly Ussleman. I live at thirty-one Laramie Street. I'm new to West Warwick. I just bought a house within the past year. And, um, I'm trying to figure out how to get involved and where to get information from. And, um, I've emailed a bunch of people and I've talked to some people and I don't know who to follow. There's several Facebook groups. Some of them look pretty sketch.
Sketchy.
I say this as somebody that runs one of them, don't get your information from any of the Facebook groups.
Right, exactly. But, um, as someone who, uh, likes being involved, who, uh, has been a renter my entire life and has finally bought a house because I plan to be here for the rest of my life, AK, the next forty to sixty years, because why not? Um, I would like to get involved and, uh, do my goal of taking over the world, starting with West Warwick. You know, I'm a Slitherin', so, um, I wanna give everyone a kitty, but you know, little details. I would like to get involved. I don't know how. I don't know where to get information from as a, as a new person who lives here.
Yeah, I mean, we do have the town website. I'm sure you.
I, I have been there several times.
Which has gotten a lot better in the last few years. Getting involved on boards, we always have, and you can.
I am not gonna point names, but I've emailed several of you on this dais and have not heard back. So, um, I don't, and I want you to like me, so I'm not pointing out names.
Right, so that's my ward and I believe we have spoken.
So, um, question about that. I, I don't understand the ward thing. Do only you represent me? None of the rest of you do?
No.
No, no.
He's your council.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. Okay.
We, we all represent all of West Warwick.
Fabulous, great. I would love to rewrite the charter. That sounds fun. Oh, I, I love bylaws, arbitrage of order, so, cool. But, um, yeah, I don't know how you. yeah, I don't know how you get appointed otherwise. So, if you have any needs, I see a list every meeting.
Does it have a list of, of different, um, it's listed here, it's listed here on upcoming appointments?
Yes.
Um, on this meeting, um-
I've turned in the application twice, so-
You wouldn't happen to be a licensed arborist, would you?
Oh, what?
Okay.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I remember this now.
My, my suggestion would be-
Can we have a, can we have a redo?
I would just-
Sure.
Set up a, set up an appointment with the town clerk, and she, she can answer a lot of your questions. Because this is public comment, there's not a lot the council can answer specifically for you, but I think the first and best place would be is start off with the town clerk, and then, uh, she can address some of your issues.
Not only emails, all, all our phone numbers are on there too.
Your, uh, your councilman also.
Yes.
It's just very difficult to do it in a public setting like this, because it's not on the agenda.
Sure. Um-
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, did you email me, because I'm going nuts looking?
I don't think it was you.
Good.
After I figured out the ward thing and who my councilperson was, I was several, and, and I had conversation, I've, I've talked to a couple people at Town Hall to try to, to do stuff, but I don't wanna take up any more of your time, um-
No, I'm, I'm sure the councilman can speak to you after the meeting about some of your concerns too.
And we've talked before.
Yeah, yes.
So, um, that was it, I just, I wanna learn more about West Warwick.
And I know that you had applied once, and then, and then I don't, did you apply the after, I, I think you, you didn't apply after that, because I know we spoke after you had applied the first time.
I sent emails in July, August, and November, and then I got busy with my own job, so-
But you have my phone number, correct?
No, and I'm a millennial, I would not call you.
You can text me, you can text me.
So-
We will, we can have a conversation and figure out, we're always looking for help.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Usually, yes.
Always.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Who's next?
Um, Kent Reynolds, forty-eight East Greenwich Ave. I'm speaking tonight, uh, kind of tagging on to some of the things Chris said, so, one of the businesses that I oversee is four oh one Storage, two twenty-five Coisa Ave. And, you know, as this has kind of changed in the meeting we had, um, and, and things have changed on Coisa going forward, kind of shining a light, number one, on the businesses and what we represent, and number two, shining a light a little bit on the, on the process. One of the things that came up that's kind of concerning to us, and I wanna start by saying, you know, as I told the two councilmen, you look at two twenty-five Coisa Ave, and it's a storage facility, but I represent nine businesses and six hundred tenants. That, we've had some problems with drainage, haven't been able to get people on the property. Mark, you were there one day, watching women walk down the middle of the street because they couldn't get around. Gordon's commented that people are parking across the street, and that problem's was solved, and that's great. But, one of the things that I see and I'm hearing, and I'm questioning, is that there is a proposal, or it may have already occurred, where the state is going to presumably sell the turning lane from Coisa onto Bald Hill to Belize, and eliminate that.
Been going on for about eight years. Councilman Kelsey was here, um, when they started talking about it.
A lot of years ago.
Do we know where we're at in that process? I, I think, you know, again, I would say the same criteria exists, is, are we giving that a thumbs up, or are we just?
It's my understanding that that was done years ago, and it's just been a stagnant plan. But now Belize is looking to move forward on their building projects. So I believe they're trying to work that construction out to minimize the downtime, that when the Water Authority does their thing with the gas, you know, because the gas lines are over the water lines, that they'd be looking to restructure that.
Could we get some clarification then, at some point? Is there, is it a done deal? I mean, there has to be a transaction.
It's a state road, so that was all handled through, through RIDOT, because it's a sale technically, or transfer of, of state land.
But again, like Chris said, I think sometimes I get the impression that maybe the town hasn't really played its full role.
Like I said, it was-
Its ability to, to voice in on that, I mean, it's, you said it's been going on for eight years.
There was something back-
What's been said in eight years.
Nine years ago on the planning board, but what exactly that was, I don't recall offhand.
A number of years ago.
Jesus.
The police came before the zoning board. They were seeking to put a sign on that little island. And the rationale at that time was that the exit was gonna be closed, it was gonna become a square. Problem that came before the zoning board was that police didn't own the island. So I advised the zoning board, forget about the exit, you got nothing to do with that. But you can't grant police the right to put a sign on property they don't own. It died at that, uh, at that stage.
But the state sold the land to Belize.
Not, I don't, I don't believe it has been sold yet. I don't know. When, when Belize came before the planning board, they came before the planning board, I'll, I'll describe it as lots one, two, and three. Lot one being the corner lot, two being where the gas station is, and three being Honda. They came before the planning board just for lot two. Their plans are to move the Genesis dealership from the corner up to, they're gonna take the gas station down, or whatever, and build a Genesis sales there. They came before the planning board, uh, for, uh, master plan. And then they came before the zoning board, because they need some setbacks. I can tell you that we did have a resident who lives on Shady Hill that came in and testified as to what a great job of communication police had done with the neighbors to make everything as good as they can. At that meeting before the planning board, they said conceptually, possibly, in the fut- future, they may be doing something with the corner lot. As they stood before the planning board, lot two was first, Honda's gonna be next, and then possibly, in the future, they're gonna do something with the corner lot. At the zoning board hearing, they testified they do not own the corner lot. During the planning board hea- hearing, it was the first time that the engineer said that DOT was planning, and I don't know the schematic of it, but DOT was planning on taking the loop out and making it a right turn intersection, where you would pull up on Coisa or Route Three, two Route Two, it would be a T-intersection. And whether they're gonna put in a breakdown, you know, a, a left or right turn lane, I, I cannot say, that was not brought up, it was just that, that, that was the future plans of DOT.
All right.
I'll get that information and set it.
I was just gonna say, we're, because we're way off to, I know we're on topic, but we're way off the agenda item itself, because it's not on the agenda. So we're doing a lot of talking ourselves, the public can ask any question, but we start getting into this much detail, it can get a little-
We can.
Um, so, Mark, if you can get an update for actually, I, I would think Mark Dennison would definitely want that.
Yes, I'll email it to everybody, just so you have.
Yep.
Hi, good evening, Natasha Pershey, I live at one twelve Shady Hill Drive, with reference to the stop signs. I just wanna actually thank Mark Dennison for his, his diagram and his emailing is more than I, um, could have asked for, so I really appreciate it. Um, I don't have a picture of water, um, however, I do have a picture of my two children, um, which is the reason why I reached out to Mark. So, I am the house that, as you travel down Quaker and cross over Quaker, my driveway is right there. So, I stop to get into my driveway, my family has to stop to get into my driveway, I have to stop, look, a lot, to back out of my driveway. Um, but now I have two children who are riding bikes, hoverboards, scooters. And, you know, there's been plenty of times where I've gone to drive, pull into my driveway, and a car is coming. Uh, because they haven't stopped on Shady Hill. And there is an increase in traffic as well because of the work on Coisa, I didn't know, no one mentioned that, it is actually a cut-through. So if you travel down Shady, all the way down, where Sycamore, where that stop sign is, you take a left, that goes all behind, leads you to like where the station nightclub fire was, like it, so it's all interconnected, so a lot of people are using it as a cut-through as well, so they are, they don't have to stop. So they're going right by my house, all the way up Shady. So, you know, our neighborhood is a family neighborhood, there's people walking their dogs, there's elderly people taking strolls. You know, my, my kids are friendly with the neighbors on Quaker, so they cross Quaker to go to each other's houses, they're constantly back, back and forth, and here's me in my driveway, watching, 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 um, making sure that a car is not gonna come. So my greatest fear is their safety, obviously. I've been dealing with it as long as I've lived there, um, always cautious, knowing that people are not stopping, because they don't have to. There's nothing telling them they have to. And so, you know, it does cause some commotion, and some, some nervousness for their, their safety.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Hi, Jay LaCroy, eight ninety-two Providence Street. I reach out to Dave often for the East Main Street, the trash, um, from the homeless encampment. So I just wanted to, you know, mention that this isn't a little bit of trash, this is, where DPW is actually bringing a loader over weekly, next to our, our business. That's over there, um, I'm just hoping that this is something that can be resolved, you know? I heard mentioning about a brick and mortar being potentially the solution, but I, I believe these people are, are in the woods, being able to, you know, they do what they want out there. You know, I, I assume many of them are addicts. If we did have a brick and mortar, would they come? Would there be a standard to have to live in this brick and mortar, or would there be lawlessness? So, I don't want to say that that is the solution as well. So I just wanna, you know, bring that up, because I hadn't heard that mentioned. So, um, I just hope that we take this seriously and, um, find a solution, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Any other public comment? And then we move into music.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes.